Would you prefer one of these?
This is fine.
Ladies and gentlemen, the council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow. Alderman Dow is present. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Hairston is present. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer is present. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris is present. Alderman Beal. Alderman Slasky Garza. Slasky Garza is present. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is present. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn is present. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez is present. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is present. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is present. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Brookins is present. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is present. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is present. Alderman Scott. Scott is present. Alderman Sichu Lopez. Sichu Lopez is present. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is present. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is present. Alderman Irvin. Irvin is present. Alderman Telfaro. Telfaro is present. Alderman Raboyas. Raboyas is present. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is present. Alderman Waguspak. Waguspak is present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Austin is present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa, present. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Mitt. Alderman Spisato. Spisato is present. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is present. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is present. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tony. Tony is present. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is present. Alderman Kappelman. Kappelman is present. Alderman Martin. Martin is present. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is present. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is present. Present Alderman Metz. Alderman Metz is present. Alderman Hopkins, are you here? Alderman Hopkins is present. Any others I missed?
There are 36 members present. We have a quorum. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Myron McCoy from the First United Methodist Church at the Chicago Temple. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor McCoy?
I bring you greetings from the First United Methodist Church at the Chicago Temple. It is the first church, the first house of worship in the city of Chicago, and its early members gave birth to Northwestern University and Northwestern Hospital. Let us pray. God of our daily lives, we pray for the people of this great city, working and without work, homeless or well housed, fulfilled or frustrated, confused and cluttered with material goods, or scraping a living from others' leavings, angrily scrolling on walls or reading the writing on the wall, lonely or living in community, finding their own space and respecting the space of others. We thank you for Mayor Lightfoot and the members of this city council. Grant them vision, dear God, to see what they can achieve, to reach beyond themselves, to share in deliberative and constructive dialogue, to stretch their capacities of hearing one another, to be attuned of decisions made today being fine for tomorrow, to be sensitive always to your presence while serving the common good. This we pray, and so may it be.
Madam Clerk, please read the call of today's meeting. Folks, we have a regular order. We're going to have public comment, and then we will bring up the issue. So just let us follow the normal rules of procedure. Alderman Beal, would you like to be recorded as a president? Alderman Osterman, would you like to be recorded as president as well?
I would, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the call of today's special meeting.
The following call for a special meeting of the City Council is filed in my office on Wednesday, October 25, 2021, at 10:25 a.m. Clerk Valencia, we, the undersigned members of the City Council of the City of Chicago, do hereby call a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago to be convened on Friday, October 29, 2021, at 11 a.m. It shall provide for remote participation, remote viewing by members of the public. In the interest in preserving safety in the City of Chicago, a special meeting of the City Council is hereby called for the following purpose and for no other purpose whatsoever, for the immediate consideration of an ordinance including in the notice regarding disciplinary and no-pay status policies. Respectfully submitted, signed, Alderman Tabarez, Alderman Napolitano, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Beal, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Cardona, Alderman Vegas, Alderman Raboyas, Alderman Spisato, Alderman Nugent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now have public comment.
Your Honor, there are no speakers who have signed up for the public comment period.
That concludes the public comment period. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the purposes of immediate consideration of the sole item on today's agenda.
There are no objections, so ordered. Are there members of the body that would like to speak to the matter? The Chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Madam President. During the past month, residents of the 13th Ward have been calling my office, expressing their concerns about the vaccine mandate and how it may have an adverse impact on public safety. Residents have told me we cannot afford to lose any officers in the 8th District because we are already short-staffed. Residents who are Chicago police officers have expressed a desire to explore other job opportunities in the suburbs. Residents who are Chicago firemen and women paramedics have called my office to report ambulances have been out of service because of the mandate. Just this past Wednesday, when we were in this body discussing our budget, calls came into my office from residents in the 13th Ward to report that there was an active shooter at Narragansett and 65th Street, which led to Door and Hancock School being placed on lockdown. Again, my office received calls saying that this shooting was taking place while ambulance 12 was down because of the COVID mandate. I'm looking into those claims, but it reinforces my concern that the vaccine mandate may have created a public safety blind spot. And my number-one issue, my number-one priority, is public safety. Let me be clear, from my perspective, this is not about the mayor. It's not about John Cantazara. It's about public safety. I am fully vaccinated. I have developed a partnership with Dr. Jorge Cavaro to help people get vaccinated in the 13th Ward, and I will continue to do that with the booster shots. That said, I believe that this vaccine mandate created a public safety blind spot. Madam President, I ask that you reconsider the mandate. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Tabarez.
From the very beginning of the current vaccine mandate rollout, it was very clear that personality was a motivating factor as much as public policy. If you work for the state, the Chicago Board of Education, or the Chicago Park District, you have a much more rational policy than if you serve as a police officer, firefighter, or laborer for the city of Chicago. Why the disparity? No alderman knows. The city is requiring these employees to get a COVID test twice a week on their own time, with a minimum of three days between each test. Other employees, under other mandates, only need one test a week. Why the disparity? No alderman knows. How is the city going to ensure the privacy of public workers uploading their health information into the portal despite using the same digital security company that allowed for massive amounts of City Hall emails to be hacked and released to the public? No alderman knows. What is the policy for reviewing religious, medical exemption requests? Why does it appear that those requests are being granted at a different rate for the Board of Education versus the new mandate? No alderman knows. Why is it that the Chicago Police Department, days after announcing to this body that it is investing more in officer wellness programs, is now stripping officers who serve as peer mental health counselors to fellow officers? Again, no alderman knows. The day I announced this ordinance, two EMTs for a firehouse in my ward were targeted for no-pay status, rendering a massive part of the 23rd Ward exposed with no ambulance service. What's the city's policy that called for that? No alderman knows. One month after we laid to rest a Chicago police officer and praised Officer Bloss for his actions on August 7, his own mother was forced to be one of the first officers to hand over her star and be placed on a no-pay status. Why? No alderman knows. So this mandate just went into effect. We don't know how this is going to continue to play out. We don't know how many more frontline workers are going to be sent home. We don't know how this is going to impact garbage collection in our ward, ambulance response times, or police patrol levels in our communities. If we had a process where the City Council was engaged, we would have a better idea. We can hold the city accountable to ensure that contingency plans are in place, but we don't have that process, so we don't know. I know this is a tough vote for some, but what are we going to tell our residents who missed a garbage pickup or had to wait extra time for an ambulance during a medical emergency? What are we going to tell the victim of a crime in our ward who had to remain in harm's way because a police force staffing crisis was made worse by a mandate that we had no control over? The mayor proposes budgets. We review, ask questions, and vote. The mayor proposes appointments. We review, ask questions, and vote. The mayor proposes labor contracts. We review, ask questions, and vote. The mayor should be able to propose personnel policies that impact vital services, and we should be able to review, ask questions, and vote. This ordinance should not be a tough vote, but I know the heated rhetoric has made this much more political than it needs to be. All we're saying here is that we should have questions. We should have answers to these questions. We, as elected representatives of the residents of our ward, deserve to have answers, not for us, but for those who voted us here. Today, all we can do is shrug our shoulders. Opposing this measure means you are okay with staying in the dark. You are okay with whatever happens. This vote makes us say the quiet part out loud. It asks us if we want to roll up our sleeves or wash our hands of the matter. I'm going to end with this. Let's not forget, don't forget, that in the height of the shutdown, this very room stood dark and vacant. As the sounds of social unrest echoed outside these chambers, the very people most impacted by this policy were showing up and doing their jobs. If you think we don't have a place at the table to ask these questions and vote on policies, then this room might as well be as quiet today as it was during the shutdown. But if that is your position, I hope you have a good answer for your constituents when they call and ask about the crime, fire, and garbage. Madam President, I ask you to reconsider this vaccine mandate. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Alderman Tabarez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Madam President. Today I stand before you, not just as the 10th Ward alderwoman or an advocate of organized labor. I stand before you and this body as a wife, a mother, a grandmother, and a Chicagoan. This pandemic has affected every single person in this chamber. It has stolen the lives of over 736,000 Americans, including 6,000 Chicagoans. 6,000 Chicagoans who will not be able to see the promise of a full life. A pandemic is not political. It is a crisis of epic proportions, and in a crisis, it is us as leaders who must provide an example to end it, and we must end this pandemic. Organized labor runs through my blood. I stood on picket lines before I stood in concert lines. I have sat on both sides of the negotiating table, and I have, from the beginning of this pandemic, fought for measures to protect workers from COVID-19 and ensure that they could get the treatment they need without punishment. But I also know the essence of a labor contract, and it's simple: to protect the health and safety of its workers. That is why so many people have sacrificed their lives for regulations that we often take for granted. They understood that if you don't have your health, then you can't put food on your table. That is why I believe a vaccine mandate is essential for our workers and our city. A vaccine is as fundamental as a hard hat, an oxygen mask, or a bulletproof vest. It won't protect you from everything, but it gives you a fighting chance when things go wrong. It is why we demand the same before you enroll in school, before you serve in the military, or before you work with the public. You have to have those vaccines. I have heard from fellow aldermen, from leaders in organized labor, and from rank-and-file city workers, and I am deeply affected by any person who thinks that their rights have been violated. But taking the power over discipline into the hands of this body rather than in the hands of the labor organizations and city departments will negate the foundation of collective bargaining as we know it. We have over 40 CBAs in this city, and each one of them has a provision for what happens when there is a dispute between management and labor: grievances, mediation, arbitrations, unfair labor practices, even lawsuits. In fact, as we speak, there are cases sitting in state and federal courts and grievances in the city of Chicago which are working their way up to the arbitrators. That's how it's supposed to work, not as fodder for political debate. I ask my colleagues who are supporting this ordinance, are you willing to make City Council the final judge on every grievance or labor dispute that arises in the city? I'm not. Are you willing to put the fate of every employee on this chamber floor without the due process and protections that have been negotiated in a CBA? I'm not, because that's what's going to happen, the way this thing is written. And that will wreak havoc on the collective bargaining process, and no matter who sits on the fifth floor, and no matter who goes into a portal to check yes or no, we will become the judge, jury, and executioner. And I do not want to be that. I have and always will fight for the concerns of my constituents and the people that live in the city of Chicago. Whether you are a cop on the beat, an EMT making the rounds, or repairing streetlights or picking up garbage, each and every one of us is a public servant, called upon to sacrifice our time, our ability, and even our well-being to protect our fellow citizens. We have to be the example for people who need reassurance in times of great uncertainty. And guess what? Those are these times right now. We need to be the individuals who show the world that saving a life is not a political discussion, because when we say "life," "liberty," and "the pursuit of happiness," we all know that without health, there is no freedom. We need to be the ones who step up and make that a reality in the city of Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. I am fully vaccinated, as is my entire family. I've spent the last 19 months working with the Chicago Department of Public Health on testing and vaccinating as many of my constituents in the 19th Ward as I can. I believe in this vaccine, and each and every day I preach to my community, "Please get yourself vaccinated." We've seen the overwhelming majority of city departments with strong compliance. Unfortunately, our public safety departments, we do not see that same compliance. I am very concerned about where our city is headed, and very concerned about the public safety, as of right now, more than 4,000 first responders are not in compliance. Some people believe that this ordinance is the way to go. Some people feel that mandates don't work. We've got to bring people together. We've got to work out a solution. We've got to take the drama and the politics out of this. Just this morning, I was notified that ambulance 17 that serves my community was down. That puts my community in peril, and that's something that I cannot quietly stand by. 19 months ago, when this horrible pandemic started, while many of us were preaching to our community, "Stay home and stay safe," it was, in fact, our first responders that were going to work, that were serving and protecting, putting themselves in harm's way, as they always do. I implore everybody here, please, let's try to come to the table and find an agreement so that we can keep our fire, our paramedics, and our police officers at work to keep all of us safe. My biggest concern is public safety, and that if we continue down this road, we're going to find situations where police cars are sitting empty in parking lots next to the station, where ambulances could be sitting in the firehouse unoccupied when, God forbid, something catastrophic happens in one of our community. Anybody who wants to be a part of that discussion, to bring parties together, to tone this down and try to work for an amicable solution to make our city safer, I want to be a part of that discussion. Thank you.
Just so the record is clear, Alderman Laspada, do you want to be shown as president?
Part of why I raised my hand, but yes, Chairman.
Okay. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez, do you want to be regarded as president?
Yes, please, thank you, Madam President.
I believe I just saw Alderman Vegas come in. Do you want to be recognized as president? Anyone else who's... Alderman Riley, do you want to be recognized as president as well?
Please.
Anyone else who's come in after the proceeding started that wants to be recognized as president? Alderman Maldonado, I think we got you at the beginning. And Alderman Beal, I think we got you as well. Anyone else who came in after the discussion started that wants to be regarded as president? Okay. Next up, the Chair recognizes Alderman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam President. I've been listening to everyone talk, and I do share a lot of concerns that people on both sides have. I share the concern for Alderman Quinn that public safety is of paramount importance here in the city of Chicago. I really had a chance to listen to Alderman O'Shea talk about the concerns that we have and putting politics aside. Actually, I agree with that, and I'm hoping that we'll come to that down the road. But this requirement, and this registration requirement, is just that: we need to assess whose what. If you are a recipient of the vaccine, we'd like to know so that we can check you off, and that's fine. If you're not, there's a testing requirement, because we want to make sure that not only you're safe, but the people that you interact with are also safe. I am one of the biggest proponents of our officers that are on the street every day, and our fire department, and our first responders in all of our central areas and departments in the city of Chicago. I support them 100%. And I also see that for the vast majority, even though they're not as higher percentage with the police department, but there's still a vast majority of those that are registered and are complying with this request. I try to avoid the word "mandate," but it is what it is. We want to know the information, and I think the vast majority of Chicagoans want to provide that information. Now, when we see people are putting themselves in harm's way, and I'm particularly focusing on the police and fire department, we want to make sure that they're safe and the people that interact with them are also safe. We talk a lot in this chamber about violence, about shootings, but yet COVID is costing more lives than violence in this community, than drug addiction, than suicide, than vehicular accidents. COVID is the number-one killer for us right now. Let's keep our eye on the ball. Let's make sure that we can eradicate this pandemic. I think that all hands should be on the table in that regard. And we're right, I agree with Alderman O'Shea. Let's take politics out of this. Let's trust the science. Let's make sure that we get what's necessary so that we can get beyond this. We don't have to wear these any longer. We want to get past that and make it safe for everyone, particularly our police and firemen that are running into danger when we are all running away from it. So let's keep our eye on the ball. Let's make sure that we focus on what's really important. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Sawyer. The Chair recognizes Alderman Kappelman.
Thank you, Madam President. It continues to stun me that we have city workers who question Dr. Ardi's medical judgment that will literally save their lives. A few weeks ago, Congressman Mike Quigley gave a powerful speech and mentioned that there was once a time when people stated they believe what they see, and how it's evolved to they see what they want to believe. We now have city workers, many of them police officers, who don't believe in the use of vaccines to prevent COVID. They only see what they want to believe. However, they become true believers once they're preparing to get intubated, and then it's often too late. Today, the number-one cause of death among police officers across this country is from COVID, which could have been so easily prevented. The ones who are also paying the cost for their nonbelief are their spouses, their children, their parents, many who also have medical conditions themselves that put them at risk for dying. They also risk their coworkers and their families, and also all of Chicagoans. What we're seeing across this country is that many people who are most resistant to getting the vaccine... getting the vaccine will grudgingly do so to keep their job. A vaccine mandate will do that. The FOP president will continue to make his threats. But take it from me, who lost a parent while growing up, their families will thank all of you. I'm asking and begging all of you, please, do the right thing. If not for our police officers and other city workers, do it for their families, who will be forever grateful. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Kapelman. The chair recognizes Alderman Laspada. Were you just raising your hand to register your presence, or did you want to speak?
Well, that was going to be the part one, but Madam President, if you would oblige me, thank you.
The floor is yours, sir.
So thank you very much. I'm glad, honestly, that we're having this conversation, although we had comments earlier, and with respect, when I was hearing that no Alderman knows what's going on, it was hard for me, because I am an Alderman, and this Alderman knows. And I know because... (applause) Thank you. You know, because, y'all, we had briefings on this. There were briefings on this yesterday. A lot of folks in the room were in those briefings. We had our answered questions. May not be a physical table, but we have a space to answer our questions and debate these topics. So that is hard to hear. And I know there's a lot of rhetoric, and there's a lot of politics in this, but for me, it's not a tough vote today, because when my residents call for building inspection, a public weigh-inspection, a paramedic, police officer, I want them to know that the person coming to their door does not present any kind of a public health risk to them. And that is what this is about for me. It's simple. I was glad, first moment I had an opportunity to get vaccinated, to take an opportunity for that. And I know that this is unfortunately political. There's so much unfortunate misinformation out there, which is why I'm grateful for your administration. I'm grateful for CDPH, folks who, honestly, we can call any time of day to get clear talk on what's happening with this policy. So I'm glad, again, for the conversation and for us to vote for really strong public health policy today.
The chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddon.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the passion that's being expressed today, that's been expressed over the last several days from some of my colleagues, Alderman Tavarez, Alderman Napolitano, Alderman Lopez, other folks who called for this special meeting. I agree with my colleague from the first ward. I'm glad we're having the discussion. I want to lift up a couple of points. You know, Alderwoman Garza mentioned we have processes for this. If we've got public workers who don't like this policy, who believe that it is unduly or unfairly targeting them, they have processes to go through grievances. There's so much work that goes into those labor agreements. I do not believe we want the 50-person body of Chicago City Council going over every detail and reacting. I feel like this is reactive, even with the passion that drives what we're doing and how we represent our constituents, which, again, I deeply respect. When we're in this space, when we're working together, when we are deliberating, when we're working with this administration and representing our city, we need to put those passions aside, and we need to use logic, we need to use patience, we need to think long-term, and we cannot be reactive. These can't be knee-jerk decisions. We can't be so reactive to people just because they don't like the messenger of a particular policy. We are not alone in this. This is something, this pandemic, we're all learning as we go. We're figuring this out, and we've been doing an excellent job of that as a city. We've had leaders from the mayor, from Dr. Arwadi, from people here in council. Like, I really appreciate my colleague Alderman Hopkins for, I think, being the most informed person, checking all the dashboards, bringing all the questions to the table. When we look at the COVID-19 pandemic, we're all bringing something special to the table. And we got to keep our cool heads, we've got to ask the right questions, and we've got to work through the process. We need people to comply. Right now, they're just being asked to comply, fill out a form. We've done it in my office, I did it. We have to have the information so that we can make better decisions for our workforce, for our residents. That's what this is about. We don't need to jump to the end conclusion. We don't need to fight that fight right now. If folks choose not to get vaccinated, that is their choice, and they should know the full consequences of their choice. Our first responders have been heroes throughout this pandemic, and we should, and I think are, doing everything that we need to in order to make smart decisions as a city to protect them and protect our residents so they can continue to show up for us. And that's, I guess, the last thing that I would say. People have talked about the political piece, about their feelings on the vaccine, but you guys, we have to keep showing up for our residents. We have to keep showing up for each other. We need our first responders, we need all of our city employees to keep showing up for us. And so whatever we have to do to make sure that they're showing up, we should be encouraging the compliance. Fill out the vaccine portal. I mean, it's moot point at this point, but compliance is what we need in order to make our decisions. We need the information. We are the decision-making body. Let's keep showing up for our residents. Let's stop making these political divisions that are unnecessary, that are tearing us apart, and undoing, I would say, so much of the hard work that we're continuing to lift up. People have made sacrifices upon sacrifices for their families, their times, and with their lives, and we need to honor those by making the smart decisions, by keeping our heads cool, by using the information and the data, continuing to challenge ourselves, but basically showing up. So I do not support the ordinance in its current sense. I think that we have the information that we need from the administration to make those decisions so that we can figure out what the best decisions are for our workforce. Everybody else is complying. We've got so many departments that are there. The question I ask is, how do we get our police department there? How do we get our firefighters and paramedics there? How do we bring them along so that we can enter 2022 as a strong city that's safer for everyone? Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Haddon. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Am I the last speaker? I am not.
I thought you had your hand up. Do you not wish to speak on this matter?
Oh, no, that's fine. Happy to speak. Thank you, Madam President, and good morning to the members of the city council. Right now, today's newspapers had some pretty stark headlines for us, for this body, for this city, when it comes to what's going on in the city of Chicago. The Sun-Times says this downtown area has seen the biggest spike in shootings in recent memory, 220% increase in shootings. The Tribune, "Law and Order Must Be Restored." Every one of the traditional, as well as the newer media outlets, is hammering us daily for the fact that our city is spiraling out of control. This isn't a topic for debate. It's not even a question. Every one of you know that your residents quite literally feel that they are under the gun every time they leave their homes. In some neighborhoods, our seniors can't even water their lawns without risking getting In some neighborhoods, you have parents who have heart palpitations at the thought of driving their children to school because they could be carjacked. And to hear many people say today, "Employees need to just comply, this is just a registry," you are all fooling yourselves if you think that's the case, because this is not simply about what happened on October 15th. This is about what's going to also happen December 31st, when the questions about whether or not we're testing people are not weekly will become mute by the fact that all employees, except everyone in this room, and everyone who works for everyone in this room, will have to have been vaccinated or face progressive discipline ending in termination. This is not just a police matter, because if you look on the information that was finally provided in a briefing a week post-deadline, we have nearly 4,000 employees who are not only not vaccinated, but also not registering, because there are over 2,600 who did register and said, "Pass on the vaccination." All of those individuals will possibly be shown the door starting next year. Many of them are the ones that we call on daily. Many of them are the ones that our residents call on when their lives are in danger, whether by violence, or by malady, or calamity. These deadlines, the one from two weeks ago and the one in two months, are 100% arbitrary. There's no scientific reason for why people had to report on the 15th of this month, or why they have to be vaccinated by December 31st. It is a completely arbitrary decision that our own Commissioner of Human Resources had lied solely at the feet of the mayor. We have the ability to have a collaborative conversation, something many of you have said so far that you want to have. We do not need to rush to the finish line and leave so many behind the way we're doing it now. And we absolutely don't need to be cheering for the termination of our employees. That is wrong. It is immoral to show thanks to those who are doing the job while many of our offices were closed and say they should be the ones out the door. I think we have our fingers pointing in the wrong direction. We can be a part of this process. We should be a part of this process. The mayor is chief executive of this process, and that is her purview, to set a standard. But it should not be a standard that jeopardizes all of our residents, all of our collective constituencies, everyone who we're going to have to turn back to in 11 months, when many of you are going to be knocking on doors, asking to stay here, and say, "We jeopardized your family, your neighborhood, your community for an arbitrary line in the sand," simply to make a point. Yes, politics should be removed, but politics is going on every day. Politics is going on right now, as we're sitting here, and we see a coordinated effort between campaign and public office, trying to get messaging out right now to the press as we're sitting here. Don't fool yourselves into thinking politics will ever come out, as long as we allow human personalities to engage in this. That's simply not going to happen. But we need to be adults. We need to be the leaders that we were elected to be and to help guide this conversation back to the center. Right now, we are riding this train off the rails, and all of us need to lean left to bring it back onto the tracks. We have to do that. This ordinance isn't perfect, but it's far better than doing nothing, than being silent, than watching our employees' morale sink lower, watching our officers question whether or not they even want to do this, forcing them into darker places that they don't need to go while we're asking them to do jobs that none of us would ever want to do. This body has to take a vote, has to take a stand, has to make a decision as to what you're going to tell our residents and our workers for the kind of city that you want to see. We can come back, we can talk. We wouldn't even be here today if we'd allowed this to go to committee and had an adult conversation in the first place. But here we are, because our safety and the safety of the entire city is at stake. It is time to have adult conversations. And I would ask my colleagues to support this, because there's nothing short of our future at stake. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'd be remiss if I didn't bring the voice of my constituents into this matter, the vast majority of which come from communities that have been some of the hardest-hit by this pandemic, both in positivity and in deaths. When I think about the 606-38 ZIP code, but then more pointedly, the 606-23 ZIP code, that's Little Village and North Lawndale, and the vast numbers of individuals who both tested positive and then died from this virus. And when I think about my constituents and what they've sent me here to do, the number-one thing they've sent me here to do is to keep them safe. You know, I want to thank our Chicago Police Department and our first responders, the vast majority of which have complied with this vaccine mandate. 70% of police have complied. Thank you for once again showing us that the vast majority of our first responders do believe in chain-of-command, do believe in acting ethically and responsibly in the name of public safety. I appreciate all of them for their efforts, and I will stand with them day after day for the amazingly hard work that they have to do in providing public safety for our community. But when I think about 35 departments in the city of Chicago, 31 of which have at least 96% compliance with this mandate, I'm at a loss for the others for not understanding the gravity of the situation and for not complying with what I believe is a holistic mandate that does offer opportunity for those who cannot, or will not, or due to religious reasons can't or won't receive this vaccine. It's rather clear how to go about doing that. And I would be remiss if I didn't bring back my constituents, those in North Lawndale and Little Village and the 606-38 ZIP code, who are amongst the highest-hit, and not just with COVID deaths, and not just with COVID positivity, but have been hit economically by this virus. They expect, like my colleague from the first ward said, for those who are attending to their greatest needs, to be putting their public safety first. I agree. I agree with my colleague Alderman O'Shea. Let's come together. Let's figure out why our public first responders are amongst the highest percentages of those who have not reported their status. Let's figure out what that issue is. To me, that's the issue we need to be directing towards. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I echo a lot of the concerns that my colleagues have raised, concerns about public safety and the impact that a mandate will have on our communities, on my community and the city. This is... COVID is a personal issue for me. Both my daughters had COVID last year, early on, and it was frightening. We didn't know much about it. Thank God they both recovered. My oldest daughter, who's in her early 20s, like a lot of women her age, had concerns and questions about the vaccination, thinking about a family at some point in her own life. And so she had concerns. She didn't get vaccinated all summer long. She obeyed the protocols. She wore a mask. My mother, who's 84, who's not in good health, although she's doing much better, my daughter respected that, kept her distance, followed all the protocols that we've asked everyone to do. I saw a show with Dr. Fauci, knew... I saw a show with Dr. Fauci, news cast, and they asked him about a national mandate. And he said, "No," but he felt bad that we're failing those that will not get vaccinated because we're not answering their questions. The rest of my family, including myself, are fully vaccinated. Eventually, my daughter, I shared that program with her. She did her research, and she eventually felt comfortable enough that the science, medicine, that she was vaccinated. So I have a concern I don't support, that we're mandating vaccination. I encourage everyone who's not vaccinated, please do your research. It does save lives. I'm encouraging them to do that. I also think that we ought to, again, like my colleagues say, lower our voices, listen to one another, and encourage people to talk through what their concerns are and work out a solution. I, like my colleague from the 19th ward, am willing to sit down and have that conversation. I think we need to also look at, what are we doing for the employees? You know, I got vaccinated to protect myself, because I know if I get COVID, the vaccination will help me. I wear a mask to protect all of you, so that I don't transmit it. And I think we ought to make sure we're continuing to wear masks, continuing to, at shift change, whether it be a water department truck or a squad car, that we get in and we clean these vehicles, to make sure that we're cleaning them and providing the necessary resources to make sure we don't transmit. I know a dozen people now who are vaccinated that have contracted COVID. We can't let our guard down because you have a vaccination. We need to continue to make sure that we wear masks and protect each other. However, I think this ordinance goes too far. There's other parts of this ordinance, like my colleague from the 10th ward had indicated. I'm not going to be sitting here judging what is issues that are covered in a collective bargaining agreement. I don't think it's right for the city council to be doing that. I think this ordinance goes too far. And as my colleagues have said, I would be more than willing to meet with whoever it is, whatever groups, if they have a discussion, to try to come out with a solution, so we don't jeopardize our public safety, we don't jeopardize the city services. Finally, I would encourage all of our city employees to respond to the portal, to report your status. It's all we're asking now. I know there's a concern that if you report today, that at the end of the year, there's an issue. And I can assure you, there's many of us here that want to work on a solution and address the mandate of the vaccination. But in the meantime, we need to know your employer. I have to do it in my other, in my private sector life. Everyone at my company has to do the same thing. And just report your status. We're not telling you today. We're just asking, so I would encourage everyone to do the same. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Farrow.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of this body. It's an honor to be able to speak to you this morning. And I'm not going to speak to you from a political perspective, but I'm going to speak to you from my heart. You know, my colleague asked, and as Alderman Laspato has stated, my colleague asked, which Alderman know, what I can tell you, what I do know, is unfortunately, I've lost loved ones to COVID. Unfortunately, I've lost loved ones to COVID, and we all probably have. We've lost friends to COVID. And that's something that we have to continue to face every single day. This virus is not behind us. It's still ahead of us. And we're still playing catch-up. Almost 700,000 people in Cook County alone, we're almost 700,000 people have been affected and have caught the COVID virus. And that's not to say the number of people and the families that have been impacted. So what we do know, as Alderman, is that this virus is killing folks every single day. Emergency rooms are still full. We can't sit back and ignore these things. Yes, we have to look at things from a public safety perspective, but we can't ignore what's in our face. How am I, if I'm sitting two feet away from an officer in a squad car or paramedic in an ambulance, or riding on a truck with a fireman, how do I protect my family? How do I know that you've been vaccinated or have not been vaccinated? See, I have a responsibility to the people that live in my household as well. And I need to have assurances myself, and I'm speaking from Chris's perspective. I need to have assurances myself that I'm not going to go to work and have to work with someone that does not want to report to me truthfully whether or not they've been vaccinated, because you don't always work with the same person every day in that car. You will be put with someone that you've never worked before, someone that you may have been worked before. And so how am I to know and have assurances that the person that I'm working with tomorrow, that when he takes his mask off in the squad car, or when I take my mask off in the squad car, that they've been vaccinated or have not been vaccinated? Because I don't want to have to deal with another tragic death. But I think we all are. So speaking to the ordinance, though, my daughter is in student teaching in the 5th grade. And last week, and this is honest God truth, last week she asked me, "Dad, how can I make the three branches of government more important?" I mean, I'm sorry, easier for her students to understand. I said, "Well, you know the branches of government. There's an executive branch, there's a judicial branch, and a legislative branch. Just tell them what each one of the functions are and what they do." And she did that, and it's still difficult for some to understand it. And I say it's even more difficult for us adults to understand it, because the ordinance that's before us today, I question its validity. I question the legality of it as well. The executive branch of government is granted by state law. Within the executive branch of government, they have an unfettered right, and the chief executive of any municipality or any state has the right, has the right to govern over the departments which falls under that branch. That means to issue orders, rules, regulations, and policies for those departments. We, as a legislative branch, cannot impose upon the executive branch rules, regulations, and policies. We cannot do that. That's why we are strictly tasked with creating ordinances. And those ordinances cannot, for all intents and purposes, make null and void an executive order of the executive branch. Legally, we cannot do this. Legally, this ordinance is improper before this body. We can't. That's why we have a COPA, an IG, a police board, a community commission now. We have these things to make policies, to determine whether policies are legitimate, and to implement them within the legislative branch. Now, we can repeal ordinances. That's within our purview. But an executive order, we cannot. So I ask you to not vote in support of this ordinance, particularly simply because I believe, and it's my personal belief, that this ordinance is without legality and is not legal before this body today. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. You raised your hand earlier. Do you, which is speaker? Were you just, yes, okay. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. To be a public servant, you have to be able to care about your neighbors, about their well-being. And I'm not saying caring about their well-being over your own. I'm saying understanding that our well-being, our collective well-being, our ability to stay alive is intertwined. The mandate we're discussing provides for people to report their status and get tested, provides for exemptions, medical or religious. And what I'm hearing today is that some people seem to be okay with sending first responders, whose vaccination status we don't know, to interact face-to-face with our neighbors. How can we feel safe sending people to respond to emergencies without knowing if they can keep others safe from COVID? How is that safety? We are government. We're responsible for people's safety and well-being. We have to make sure we do everything we can to protect people from this deadly virus. This mandate is necessary. And I am down to fighting for independence from the executive, and I have been. And that's a conversation that hopefully we can take on together, because we need it. I'm down. The vaccine mandate is not the thing we use for that. This mandate cannot become an issue to go to war for in this council. We are still in a pandemic. If you are a public servant, and especially those interacting with our communities, you need to care about our neighbors and understand that our well-being is tied together. Please, public servants, report your status, get vaccinated, or get tested for the protection of all of us. I oppose this ordinance, and I hope my colleagues oppose it as well.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. These are unfortunate and devastating times for the entire world that we are going through. For Chicago to deal with a pandemic on top of the worst uptick in crime that the city and state has ever seen is a complete devastation to us all. I wanted to believe that our constant beacon of hope that resonate in all of our hearts and minds is that the American way will find its way to prevail. Unfortunately, I believe we lost the concept of the American way. We have officially become a country, state, and city where the government takes away your right to choose what happens to your body. You hear, no matter what the topic is, no matter how you look at this topic, you need to know that this is going to be documented, that you are stealing people's rights. We've asked all of our frontline workers to stand strong the entire pandemic. We sent them out in large crews to maintain broken water mains, so that while those quarantined in place would have an ample supply of water, and they did it while risking their lives without question. We asked them to go out and make sure the city's electrical grid was maintained and functioning properly at the risk of catching COVID, to make sure that those quarantined in place had power in their homes, and they did it without question. We asked them to police the city in the height of a pandemic and get on buses, shoulder to shoulder, to combat a paid-for protest that destroyed our city. We asked them to patrol our streets, where people refused to quarantine in place, that put them at risk constantly to catch COVID, and they did it without question. We asked them to hold the line of fire suppression and advanced life support in the height of a pandemic, putting them at risk every single time that bell rang, and they did it once again without question. And while doing it without question, the bulk of them caught COVID-19 and fought it with natural immunity. And many of them, including myself, witnessed the loss of friends and loved ones from it. Not a single one of them is ignorant to this virus. Not a single one of them doesn't know the capabilities of this virus. But every one of them did their job, as a strong American does, hoping that they would have the ability to make their own choices for their own body. Now, the entire city of Chicago is even more of an elevated public safety crisis in our skyrocketing crime stats that even now, we have multiple ambulances and advanced life support engines and trucks out of service the same time throughout the entire city, putting each and every resident once again at risk. I, too, have hosted many vaccination clinics, up to four so far, and will host them constantly. I will get as many people vaccinated with this vaccine that want to. But it will be a cold day in Chicago when I force anybody to. I got to say, yesterday was our first real discussion in a briefing about what is going on with this mandate. I find it disturbing in my heart, as a strong union brother for 22 years and good standing still, that this was brought up, that it was in negotiations through a collective bargaining agreement. What discussion was had with the local union members on the street? What choices were they given from their unions? They weren't given any, because this was done as a mandate and as an executive order. And that's why we are all here today, because nobody was given a choice. My entire family also caught COVID, including myself. Some of them caught it twice. Some of them are frontline workers in the city of Chicago and are extremely proud to be so, multiple generations, sons and daughters of strong city workers. Some of them chose to be vaccinated, some of them have not. They've chose natural immunity, the same thing that saved them when they first caught it, or the second time they caught it. So if you think anyone here is against vaccination, anybody in this crew that is pushing to make a difference and give our city workers a voice, you have another thing coming. You're misinformed. I, too, am vaccinated. That's comical to me, because a lot of you don't think I am, because I wouldn't tell any of you. You just figured I wasn't, like I'm an anti-vaxer. But I am vaccinated. And I will push, like I said, anybody to get vaccinated that wants to get vaccinated. Madam Mayor, I truly believe your intentions are to save every life. I truly do. But please don't steal the rights of people in the process. These are not rights like chickenpox and polio that were brought up or written before, that are discussed in job applications, that are part of studies that have been done for over 50-plus years. We are now mandating something that has been created two years ago and is on-the-fly studies. I support it. I think eventually it will eradicate the virus, but it doesn't eradicate it now. It doesn't kill the virus now. But I support the constant research of it. But I support it to be done on those that want to be vaccinated. In closing, I'm assuming the vast majority of you will possibly just vote against this anyways. But if you do, I have to tell you this. I do appreciate this conversation. I do appreciate the way everybody is doing this. This is calm, cool, and collective, the way it's supposed to be. I do believe in every one of your hearts that you have the best intentions for yourself, your family, and the city of Chicago. But if you vote against this today, I ask just one thing of y'all. Show up tomorrow and sit down at a table with you, Madam Mayor, and all of us, and figure out how we can get through this. Put politics aside, start putting people first. And I know, I know a lot of you look at me in a different way, and I'm okay with that. But I know in your hearts that together we can all do this. And I know in your hearts that together we all respect each other and respect decisions that are made. Because out there right now, it's the vaccinated against the unvaccinated. And that starts in politics, and that's our fault. It should be about people, not political agenda. It should be about people, not party. It should be about Chicago. Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Alderman Napolitano. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am, being in this room right now has got me believing in vaccination side effects when I'm looking at the levels of dissonance that border on hypocrisy. We've got people talking about people being afraid in the streets and heart palpitations. That's what COVID does. We've had two years of having to shut down our city because people were getting sick, dying, and catching cases. We talk about first responders and people in ambulances. They were the ones seeing people being carted off from their homes, sick and dead, when New York had morgue vehicles. That's what we were living through the last two years, and people are acting as though it didn't happen. The conversation we're talking about is about public safety. And every single time we've got members here, the first thing they're saying is, "I'm vaccinated. We have to keep everybody safe." Yeah, so you understand the value of getting vaccinated. And so does the majority of the Chicago Police Department, of the Fire Department, and all the first responders we're talking about. This is not about the departments. It is about a fringe minority in those groups pushing an agenda. And it is embarrassing. We're Chicago. This isn't Arkansas. I don't even get it, this idea that we're somehow diminishing the American way. George Washington mandated vaccinations for smallpox in 1777. It wasn't 50 years of research that led to that. It was leadership. You have to make tough decisions. We understand that. We want people safe. The same folks who were telling us about following the laws and complying and not resisting, they've talked about that for decades. They couldn't even put masks on when we had a mask mandate. And here we are right now, having a debate about health and safety? I know this council better than that. I know the conversations we've all had. I was I was not confused about my colleague being vaccinated. I know there's plenty of people here who are, but love to talk about that to their constituents because they think it makes them look tough and they're backing the police. It's not the truth. The majority of officers are vaccinated and have reported, and out of the ones that haven't, I know there's a fraction of those that are vaccinated but don't want to come out publicly because the rest of their colleagues want to make it a laughingstock. It is a joke. I don't believe, we don't believe it. This is about politics since day one. It is about John Catanzara being a little Trump-like Pied Piper, vaccinated himself, telling people not to do it, and they had October 25th here in City Hall looking like January 6th in DC. It is a joke. So if you really want to talk about public safety and you want people to be safe, then have our officers get vaccinated, not that hard. They're brave, they're out there on the most difficult nights, they're defending people. So taking a shot to get vaccinated, yeah, add that to the level of bravery, and if you can't do that, then you have a religious exemption or a medical one, because those are very valid reasons. There is a process to do so. So I completely understand that everyone here wants our city to be safe. We all do. We understand that our neighbors are scared and that anything that appears to be a lack of support from our first responders, from police, adds to that fear. We agree with that. All this parliamentary and let's talk about ordinance, you want to make things safer? Tell the cops to get a shot. Get vaccinated. Right? That's part of the job. Part of the city's role as an employer is to be able to make those decisions. So this isn't removing anybody's right or liberty. They have every choice not to get vaccinated. There are consequences for those choices. That's also part of the job. So respectfully, because I have a lot of love for our colleagues here, we know better because we have the conversations with each other. Let's not position ourselves and say it's not about politics when that's all some members are doing here because their constituents are scared. We get that you're scared. That's why we're asking our first responders to get vaccinated. If you don't want to do it, you've got exemptions, you've got a grievance process. Everything else is theater. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. Last call for speakers because we're coming to the end. One more. Alderman Gardner, did you raise your hand? All right, next up, Alderman Hopkins, I have you. The chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam President. It's actually been a while since I asked for a floor in this chamber, so I hope, my colleagues, I hope you'll indulge me on this one. I want you to raise your hand if you remember when people could smoke cigarettes on airplanes. Raise your hand, please. Okay, for those of you not raising your hand, we know how old you are, we've seen your Wikipedia page. It was only 21 years ago, folks. I know it seems like forever, but the ban on smoking on domestic and international flights passed in 2000. I remember it, and I know you all do too. You may not remember the controversy surrounding it, but it was a point of debate in public bodies like this one across the country. And certainly there was pushback, not just from people who enjoyed smoking and wanted to continue doing so on an airplane, but the tobacco lobby got involved and it, you know, it became a thing. It took a while, actually, to phase it in and to get to that point where we could ban tobacco smoking on airplanes, which seems today like it's always been that way. Ask a young person if they remember it, and they'll be like, "What? You mean you used to be able to smoke on planes?" How did the controversy get resolved? Quite simple. Question of individual rights. Your right to willingly ingest toxic carcinogens as a byproduct of tobacco combustion bumped up against my right to not breathe poisonous air. Seems pretty simple now, and the parallel today is obvious. Ladies and gentlemen, the SARS-CoV-2 virus enters your body when you inhale. You get COVID from breathing, and when you're infected, you shed that virus when you exhale. You spread this potentially deadly disease by breathing, not by touching a dirty doorknob and picking your nose, by breathing. This is more than just a question of individual rights. It's a question of your public safety every time you walk out the door, every time you're in a crowd like this one. And going back to the fact that the tobacco ban was controversial years ago, I actually think it's healthy that it's somewhat controversial today. I know where I stand, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit as I'm leading into that, but I think it's healthy that we, as a public body, are having this debate right now, and Alderman Tabarez, thank you. Thank you for bringing this to us today. This is our job to resolve this and to talk about this and not shy away from the controversy and to try to make a difficult decision based on the facts, based on where science leads us. And as so many speakers before me have said, to sort of tamp down the emotion of this all and try to make a logical, rational decision for what the right thing to do is going forward. I didn't see a lot of rationality when I was here Monday. I went to the protest. I was out there on LaSalle Street on the sidewalk. I saw a lot of anger, and I saw a lot of fear. And I think it's an appropriate response to what's happening to our world right now. But as my wife Colleen says in her clinical counseling practice, the anger is coming out sideways. It's not being directed in the right place. We shouldn't be angry at vaccines, and we shouldn't be afraid of them either. If you want to be angry, you can be angry at the fact that we've all been lied to starting on February 27, 2020. One day, it'll all just disappear like a miracle. Remember that? That was a lie. This virus stalks us every day like an invisible predator, bringing death and disease. We should be afraid. I'm afraid. I'm afraid of what's happening in the future because we don't know. We don't know where this is going. Everyone agrees this pandemic is not over, but we don't know what the next phase will be. We can't know. And the institutions that are supposed to protect us either can't, or even worse, in some cases, they're unwilling to. And that's partially what this debate is about, because we, as a city, happen to control one of those institutions, city government, and it's incumbent upon us right now to act. This virus didn't exist in 2019. It was a couple of years later. An estimated 300 million people in the world have been infected by it. 5 million have died. And yet, 3 billion people, 38% of the world's population has been vaccinated. Ladies and gentlemen, the vaccine is safe and it's effective, and it is the best tool we currently have right now to stop this and to turn this around. The other tools, of course, we all know, masks, ventilation and filtration of the air, so we can treat the air and make it safe to breathe and keep it free of pathogens the same way we treat water. When we drink water, we want to know it's been filtered and treated so we don't get cholera. When we breathe the air, from this day forward, we need to know it's been filtered and treated so we don't get COVID. It's that simple. We have so much work to do, and yet we're arguing still about vaccines. Fine. But the argument has implications immediately. It's taking on these very destructive overtones where we're straying from the science. Two months ago, according to a poll that was just released today by the Kaiser Foundation, 34% of all parents said that they were going to get their children vaccinated immediately upon authorization for 5- to 11-year-olds. Today, that figure has fallen to 27%. That breaks my heart as a parent. We're failing our children. I'm going to double down. Not only do I support a vaccine requirement for public employees, but let's think ahead to where this is going. Vaccine booster requirements are in our future. This is from a study that was published yesterday in the British Medical Journal Lancet. "The length of time between the second dose and a PCR test showed a significant increase in fully vaccinated people who tested positive compared to fully vaccinated people who tested negative, suggesting that vaccine protection declines as soon as two to three months after vaccination. The implication observed is consistent with recent large-scale global data. The vaccines are safe and they're effective, but their effectiveness is not permanent. We are not done talking about vaccine requirements. We won't resolve it today. It is likely to be a significant part of our lives for a long time going forward." Fortunately, the vaccines, as we all know, can be adjusted. I'm sure Pfizer and Moderna's labs are right now looking at the new variants that are out there, including this new one called AY-30 that is proven to be highly evasive of the current vaccines. So we need to resolve this now. The clock is ticking. I personally oversaw a vaccine clinic along with my colleagues, Alderman Riley, Alderman Bernard, Alderman Smith. We vaccinated about 8,000 people, and I was there for most of it, and I witnessed of those 8,000 people, fairly significant number of them really had some concerns, they had some fears, they were apprehensive. Many cases, they really didn't want to be there. They were struggling every step in that line from the time they entered the clinic to the time they got the jab in their arm. And we figured it out pretty early on, and we saw what they needed. They needed support, they needed reassurance, they needed comfort, they needed answers. We had counselors, we had volunteer physicians on staff the entire time. We did a lot of hand-holding. We even at one point had a strolling violinist walking through the line, playing soothing music to try and create a comforting, warm atmosphere so people could get through their fears, and it worked. You know what didn't work? Threats, coercion, shame, criticism. That didn't work. These are highly stressful times for all of us. We have to figure this out. I think we can. We haven't done very well in this current policy in terms of its implementation, but that doesn't undermine the need for a vaccine requirement. I fully support the vaccine requirement, and I hope going forward, we can find ways to make it easier for people to understand why they need to do it and to help them through this very emotional and frightening process at these very frightening times. I will vote no on this ordinance. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Hopkins. The chair recognizes Alderman Siqueira Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to echo some of the same comments by my colleague Alderman Hopkins. I think we all have family members, we all have neighbors, we have friends who have died in this pandemic. Almost 6,000 people in the city of Chicago have died, victims of this pandemic. And I think it's important today, for the sake of our community, that we stop the misinformation, we stop politicizing this issue, and we talk about the facts, and we talk about the science, and we put the health and well-being of our communities and our city before anything else. I think it's important, as we've seen, that we talk about the science and the facts here, and the science and the fact show us the importance of herd immunity. Herd immunity is critical for us to protect our city, to avoid another shutdown, and to prevent more tragedies, to save lives. It is critical that we, as elected officials and legislators who have been having briefings on this issue, discuss this information objectively and for the well-being of our communities. What we have heard clear, and we want to make sure that we address all this misinformation. If there are concerns about confidentiality, we all have heard about the protections and encryptions that are in this mandate. We all know that. That is a fact. We all have heard about herd immunity and why we need it. Every municipality that have gone that route has had much better rates of success. When we see the reality on those most vulnerable communities, we see that essential workers, first responders, have been the most affected. The number-one killer of police officers right now is not gun violence, it's the pandemic. We ought to the city to look at these decisions with the facts and the science, and that's why it is a shame to continue to see the misinformation. It is a shame to continue to see political campaigns being lifted out of this issue. This is the time where we need to stop this shameful debate that is not helping anyone. I think it's clear that for the sake of our city, of our families, we understand the importance of vaccination. Vaccination has saved lives unequivocal, and that's a fact. People who have gotten sick, when they're getting vaccinated, have a much, much, much higher rate of survival. That is another fact. Today, I urge all our colleagues, all of us, to hear the facts we have been briefed, to look at the eyes of our constituents, and with the truth behind us, take this vote. Take the vote to save the lives of our constituents. Take this vote to ensure public safety, to ensure the safety and the well-being of our residents. I think that we have had enough of the misinformation, enough of the politicization of a public health matter, and we owe it to our constituents to make more progress. We are at 75% of Chicagoans getting at least the first vaccine. That is good progress to get us to herd immunity. The Chicago Department of Public Health has made effort to meet with every single public employee to accommodate every special request. That's what we have heard, to address any confidentiality issue, but we ought to be working to herd immunity. Colleagues, this is our responsibility for our children. We have vaccination that is coming for children under 12 years old. We ought to protect them right now, first responders in particular, to protect the well-being, the public safety, and the lives of our residents. Are there the people fighting this vaccination, they're going to be people who are going to be taking care of the orphans that we have in our community? Because that's what's happening right now. Enough is enough. I'm prepared to take a vote today to vote no on this ordinance, and move to forward to look at the recommendations of the public health experts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazaro.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council that showed up today, I appreciate it, and those of you that couldn't make it, I also understand with such a short notice. First of all, I want to thank everybody for a mostly civil meeting. I have to tell you, there's been good points brought up both ways. I don't believe anybody in here is a doctor, though, but we're going by information that we get, so it's no secret to you. Of course, I'm not the only one that's looked at differently, Anthony. I think you and me are two that are looking at differently, but I am not vaccinated. I don't preach to anybody not to get vaccinated. I've had clinics repeatedly testing. I tried damn hard in the beginning to get vaccinations in my ward, and in the beginning when I couldn't get it, even though my three zip codes in my ward were the top five pretty regularly, but for some reason, we couldn't get vaccinations in my ward. I had to reach out, I had to reach out to ASCO. So the ordinance may not be perfect, and it's not perfect at all, but it brought us to a point where we can have a quite civil conversation, I feel. And I don't feel this is about, I mean, the main thing I feel this is about is December 31st, and that's my concern. People losing their jobs. I think we need to sit down, talk, figure this out, educate people some more. I agree. I don't believe everybody's educated on this. I'm not never a vaxxer. I just know what the consequences could be for me right now if I get it. I may get it a month from now, I may get it a year from now, I don't know. I'm doing all the research I possibly can. I'm all prepared in my house if I do get it, they have all my concoctions there if I do get it. I will tell you that, you know, where I believe most of the people in this council respect me, certainly some- me, certainly some of my constituents, or some of the lefty loons that like to criticize me that aren't in my ward, that wish I die, they hope I get what I deserve, kind of terrible people think that way about if they disagree with you on something. But I'm sure not, I'm not the only one that got some vile threats from people. But I just look at this as more of a vote, everybody. You have to vote your conscience, you have to vote what you think is right, but this is a vote, are we prepared to fire people on January 1st? Right now, I shouldn't say right now, as of Wednesday morning, we had 30 police officers on no-pay status and 20 policemen slash firemen. I don't know what they're doing, I don't know what they're thinking. I would beg them to comply and go into the portal, and let's figure it out from there. And I think when some of you say you can get a religious or medical exemption, I think you're wrong, because I don't know that HR is granting every religious and medical exemption. I would guess there are very few. I don't know how many we received so far, but all's I know is we got some misinformation. I know this sheet was brought up that we received, there's some very, very bad misinformation on here, and that certainly is the police department, that we have 12,719, when as of October 1st, we had about 12,126. So I don't know where we're at right now. I would ask, I've talked to friends, to tell them just to comply for now, and let's sort this out. But to threaten somebody we're going to fire, and if you claim to be a labor person, and you want to be behind that firing somebody because they didn't comply, because they didn't get the shot that they don't believe is right for them, I don't know what to say. I think that's wrong. But we've got a starter of a conversation here that's been pretty good so far. I too would love to be on a committee. I think we could balance this committee with people, the fours, the against, and that's about it. But once again, Madam President, appreciate this meeting. Members of the council appreciate all of you, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. To my colleagues, I'm too grateful for the conversation, as if it's not just held here, it's held in our community every day. In fact, I was on a community meeting last night talking about the same issue that we are debating or speaking about today here in the council. And just for myself, from the beginning of COVID, we were putting ourselves on the line. Why? Because we wanted to make sure we protected ourselves and got the information out to our communities. That means that not one day were I not working. That meant every day I had to go. And the biggest issue was in the African-American community where we were struggling just to get the vaccine. I had to go through the period of trying to get them to the nursing homes, get them to that great Streets and Sanitation Department when there were no masks even out. We all remember Dr. Willie Wilson stepping up to the plate to help us. And I can tell you, I'm grateful for the help that he gave all of us so that we could get a start in trying to figure out the steps that we needed to go. As we continue to travel down that road, many constituents, not some, not one or two, every day, three and four, just incredible, for not being able to get the vaccine, the shortage of the vaccine. Other folks were getting vaccination when we couldn't even get it in our own community, and it was there in the community. I don't have to tell you the story. You know the story. What's really sad is that we are sending a bad message for Chicagoans by debating who should or who shouldn't take this vaccine. We have children out here right now, and I don't know no one no more afraid of taking a shot than a child. I don't know no one. Everybody in my family got the shot, but the youngest one, the grandson, didn't want the shot. He was the one caught the virus. Two weeks, he had to miss out of being with the family locked in his room, don't come out, put your food at the door, you get it. Soon as he came out the room, grandma aware, I'll go get my shot here. It's no joke, even for kids. We don't know what the future holds. We can't control what's out here, but we can respect the ones who are in authority, our hope, the scientists. I don't know if they're right or wrong, but I know I don't have the answer, so I'm going to have to listen to someone. For all of those who have not taken the shot, in fact, I haven't gotten a call from anyone at my office telling me what way to go or what way not to go, or don't support the mandate, or... I think everyone, if you need some information, get the information. But we have too many of, too much of a fight right now in dealing with the violence. I'm, you concerned about December 31st, you want to know what I'm concerned about? I'm concerned about every doggone day, in particular going through the holidays. Now, I need our law enforcement. I don't want you to be angry because of the way I'm represented, I want you to serve and protect me. That's what I want. I think it's our community, the public, the city deserve to be protected. That's what we sworn to do. Our oath ought to mean that much to us, because we surely can't serve and protect if you don't protect yourself first. And I'm looking to support all of our law enforcement, all of our departments, hoping that they have no ill feeling. But we have choices in life. You have a choice to get up, or you got a choice to lay down. Now, you can take the vaccine, or you cannot take it, but don't make it be my problem. That's all I say. Don't make it my problem for what you don't want to do for yourself. If you want to talk to me about it, I'm open to talking to anyone. But I would urge you to take the vaccine, I don't know nothing else to tell you to do. The world is taking it. I don't sell too many people lose their life for to tell you not to. What is it that'll get you to come around and do your job that we've been sworn that we would do for this city of Chicago? We need to keep moving forward. This is a time spent in a good way, but if we don't come together and just talk about the issue, we're not going to be able to move forward. Because I really don't want to feel like I have to be afraid that I'm not going to have a police officer in my ward right now. I don't want to feel like that if we call the paramedics because somebody don't like what's going on, they're not going to send the paramedics. I don't want to have to feel like I can't get my garbage picked up and my constituents going to complain because we have some who disagree. That was your choice to disagree, but don't make it my choice. Let me do my job, let me continue to work and serve, and hopefully you can find an answer to however you believe. I will continue to keep working with the council, keep working with each and every one of you, and thank you for the opportunity. Just even allow me to speak, but remember our children, remember our children, they love to hear negative. You know, you do, you can pick up bad before you can pick up good. And so the negativity that we're putting out is going to spread and have children not wanting to take the shot. That's not going to help us at all moving forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. It's the Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to recognize all the police and fire, our first responders for what they've done through COVID to help protect our citizens and putting their own lives at risk throughout this to help people out. All of us know the sacrifice that they've done, and all of us respect that deeply, what they've done. I want to make sure that they remain healthy, I want to make sure that they get vaccinated. For some to characterize members of us or this body to look forward to firing people in the crisis we're in right now with safety is simply wrong. Nobody wants that. Nobody wants to fire policemen or firemen or ambulance workers. We want to have a healthy, safe workforce for everybody. If that means us working closer together on awareness, then let's do it. If that means members of this body working together to come up with some amicable solutions, let's do it. If that means Department of Public Health going every fire department or police station to talk about vaccine, let's do it. But we have to be vaccinated. It's in the best interest of our entire city. The other thing is that we don't know where this pandemic is going to go. None of us know where it's going to go. And we may be looking at this conversation we're having today in a year, saying, why were we having that conversation? We're city leaders, and we have to work together to bridge divisions, and we have to do that. Today, we were called down to vote on an ordinance, we're going to vote on that ordinance, and I'm going to vote no. The work doesn't end with the vote. We have to work to bridge the divides and get people vaccinated. I've got nothing but respect for Dr. Awadi, and I remember being in this building in a conference room on the third floor as the pandemic broke. She is an epidemiologist who we were very lucky to have in our city with us through this whole thing. I respect and trust her. It's also important to note that we are not alone, Chicago, having this conversation. Every major city in our country is enacting requirements that people get vaccinated that work in the public sector. Every single one. We're not alone. So I just say that we have to work together closer and really make awareness to everyone so that everyone's vaccinated. But today, I'm going to be a no on this, but again, we have to work closer together to keep our safety for every citizen and our workers. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Good afternoon. Public workers can't protect and serve if they're carrying and transmitting coronavirus. Let me say that again. You can't protect and serve if you're carrying and transmitting coronavirus. It's the Friday of Halloween weekend, and there's going to be a lot of scary costumes and frightening sights around Chicago. But one of the most frightening things this weekend is the anti-vaccine disinformation and misinformation masquerading as reasonable public safety arguments. Anti-vax right-wing activists have put on a public safety costume this holiday weekend. The few people who have reached out to my office in support of this ordinance believe wild conspiracies about vaccination. Some of them have told me that they believe vaccines cause sudden infant death syndrome, death, and even infertility. Wow. I guess they're taking medical advice from Nicki Minaj's cousin. Here are the facts. The vast majority of city departments are at nearly 100% compliance with our city's vaccine requirement. My ward office, like many of yours, is at 100% compliance. Go team, I love you all. The vaccine is safe, it has received FDA approval, and the city's vaccination policy is extremely reasonable. Our city's policy has a religious exemption, it has a medical exemption, and if you're not vaccinated, you simply need to get tested for COVID on a weekly basis. You know, at the local level, there's a surprisingly long list of issues that the left and right can work on together. We all want trees trimmed, potholes patched, and timely delivery of garbage cans to our residents. But on this issue, I cannot join the right wing of this council in pledging fealty to the FOP's right-wing Trump-loving president. In Chicago, we believe in reasonable, evidence-based, public health measures to save lives during this pandemic. On the city's vaccination policy, I'm going to listen to public health experts like Dr. Allison Awadi, not FOP President John Kattonzero, because for all we know, he might still think that his hero, Donald Trump, won the 2020 election. I cannot support an ordinance which invalidates union contracts. I hope that we reject this ordinance today and send a strong message that in Chicago, we don't give in to right-wing fear-mongering, right-wing misinformation, or disinformation. In Chicago, we support reasonable measures to save lives and keep people safe during this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start by saying whatever your vote is today, I can respect whatever viewpoint you have. Obviously, we've heard over and over how people feel about this vote. What I can say, instead of repeating what we've already heard, is that when you go into a firehouse, there's a budding rivalry between firemen and paramedics. And the underlying truth is that everybody in the firehouse really knows who the heroes are. I worked on Truck 26 in Garfield Park for 14 years. I worked hand-in-hand with women and men on ambulance 10 and ambulance 15, two of the busiest ambulances in the country, not the city, two of the busiest ambulances in the country. They treated everything from heroin overdoses, gunshot victims, congestive heart failure, women giving birth, diabetic strokes. Has anybody in this room ever been in the presence of one of those things happening in front of you? Yes, you have. So you know what a helpless feeling it is when you don't have the knowledge or the tools to help somebody in that situation. Right now, we have a number of ambulances that are out of service. It's unacceptable. We can't afford to have that. We can argue back and forth on whether or not we want more police, or whether we should have more police officers or not, and all due respect to the police officers, obviously. But what we can argue about is whether or not we need more ambulances and more paramedics. The paramedics are the true heroes of this city. They do not get as much praise as they should. But let me tell you, as a fireman, I'm saying publicly, paramedics save countless lives every single day. I've seen it firsthand. I'm speaking humbly today to bring attention to the fact that if we continue to go down this road, the path that we are on, our residents will lose. Lives will be lost due to ambulances not in service. I simply ask, as some of my other colleagues have said earlier, that we come together in good faith to create a better solution to a problem that will inevitably impact countless lives in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gardner. The Chair, Alderman Moore, you, I believe you came in after the debate had started. Do you want to be counted as present for the record?
Yes.
And sir, did you have your hand up to also speak?
Yes.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me start out by saying that when this was first enacted, you know, I had my own concerns, but you know, you got to trust sometimes your leadership in what they're trying to do. But then, I had to come here to be the voice for several calls that I received. One young lady who was discriminated against and had to fight to get on the fire department after years of discriminatory practice against African-Americans, especially some women on the fire force. And she called me and was just shook and saying, I don't know what to do, I have four kids, and I'm just not ready. Then I got a phone call from a friend of mine who's on the police department at Simeon, who went to Simeon High School with me, and he said, David, you got to fight for us, I'm just not ready. And then I had a Streets and Sanitation worker to call me. On the life of my daughter, I'm telling you the truth. And that's why I'm here today, because my thing is, it's not what you do or what we do, it's how Because my thing is, it's not what you do or what we do, it's how we do it. It's not whether we say, and it does matter whether we say forget you or whether we say F you. Those things and those words matter. So for when you're saying policy versus mandate, I think it confuses the people out there. And so I think what our mayor is trying to do is do right. I think what I appreciated, and she didn't know we was going to pandemic, and selecting Dr. Awadi, I think was a great choice. I listened to all of these people. But I think it's how we do this. And I think I heard Alderman Thomas and Thompson and Alderman Matt O'Shea talking about getting to a point where we can get an understanding with this so that we get to what we want to get to, and that's keeping people safe at the end of the day. Whether some people have been vaccinated or not, I have not assurance if somebody that's been vaccinated don't have the virus. So I'm constantly keeping my mask on. But as I'm talking to these people, I'm bringing what they've told me back to this council. Whether we support that or not is on us. Number one, if some people even vaccinated don't want to let people know that they're vaccinated, it's their choice. We got three choices. We got choices on their link. So say you're vaccinated, and if you don't report, then you lose your job. If people, we should have a choice whether you have the right or choice to say you're vaccinated. You have the choice not to respond, and you have the exemptions. If you don't respond, or you report that you're not vaccinated, if you do so choose, then, just like everyone else, and it should be some consistency, you should have to be tested once a week. I think somebody else mentioned with the other departments, there's inconsistencies here, and we have to be consistent throughout the whole, not just City of Chicago, but our sister agencies everywhere. And I think once a week, and a lot of people that I'm talking to, that's reasonable. That's reasonable. And then, we have these conversations with people to get them to that point of vaccination, just like we continue to doing, telling people and encouraging them. And then we're looking at where people are not vaccinated when we get this information and saying, how can we be of more assistance? What information do you need? To encourage and continue to encourage vaccination. And so I don't want anyone to lose their jobs behind this thing come the end of December. I've asked three, I actually asked four people, what did you get out of the, what was, what you got from city council? I got four different answers. Meaning, there's some confusion if I'm getting four different answers from people. And so while this ordinance isn't perfect, the mandate portion, and we have to make some adjustments, needs to be done. I agree with Alderman Sue Garza and what she's saying in terms of the collective bargaining agreement. If that's in there, then it has to be amended. If it's in there and we pass this, maybe we can come back and amend it. But at the end of the day, we cannot have people thinking they're going to lose their jobs. We have to help them get there. And I want to make sure we continue to help them get there without this whole thing of a mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, it seems to me that we are debating a mandate that I don't think is controversial for the vast majority of the employees, first responders, firefighters, and police officers of the City of Chicago. When over 70% of our employees have already agreed and are reporting their status, this is not a controversial mandate. This is controversial just for a very small minority that started when the president of the FOP, Cantazara, started to push back with his sign, Cantazara for Mayor. That's when this became controversial. And for us to fall on this debate, political debate, because it is not a scientific debate, to fall on this political debate because this guy is pushing us to do this? A well-known Trumper that is also vaccinated, both of them, that was present on January the 6th at the Congress of the United States, trying to attack the Congress of the United States? That guy has brought us here two days after we voted on our budget to waste our Friday here, and you're going to call this a legitimate debate? Come on, let's grow up. You know what this is it? We are here because there is 21% of the police officers that they don't want to comply. Why? And I bet you, most of them are vaccinated, but they wish not to comply like little kids. I don't want to do what my daddy is telling me to do. That is uncalled for. So let's be adults, and let's do the right thing. If we have a means to protect the people of the City of Chicago, if you have, as a police officer, have taken the oath of serve and protect, refusing to be vaccinated, refusing to report yourself as being vaccinated or not, and taking the vaccine, the weekly vaccine, then you're violating, you are violating the same oath that you took to serve and protect. And I have an issue with that. And I know that the vast majority of police officers, firefighters, that I have a neighbor of mine that sent me a text the other day to vote in favor of this ordinance, and I told him I can't. And I told him I can't for the reason that I just described to you here today. Because what this mandate calls for is the right thing. So let's do the right thing. Let's vote on this, and let's get the hell out of here. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes... Thank you, Alderman Maldonado. The Chair recognizes Alderman Tunnie.
Thank you, Madam President. I support the mandate, and I'm generally not a mandate-type of individual. But I talked to my staff and have come to the same conclusion that there are essential workers that have performed miraculously over the pandemic. But they're essential because we, as the public, have no choice in bringing them into our homes or interacting with them because they are essential. So it's not just police and fire, it's hospital workers. Why would, you know, why would you go to the hospital if you're sick if there's a worker that's not vaccinated? It doesn't make any sense. It's the old adage is, don't go to the hospital because if you're sick, you'll get sicker in the hospital. It's the same kind of responsibility that we have as essential workers. And I'm not putting myself in that category. So it just, they have a responsibility to deal with the public. Public has no choice in who comes to their door. And I think that's very important, that they accept that responsibility. The other thing that, you know, whether it's a labor management issue, I agree with Alderman Garza and others, you know, we could be here often if we start going down this road on personnel decisions with various city departments. That's why they have unions, and hopefully, we'll hear sooner than later a lot of these issues from the courts, I believe. And maybe that's where it should be. A couple of things that I also wanted, that I don't think necessarily has been brought up enough on this debate. Obviously, for the last 20 months, we've heard COVID every single day, and the science and such. And I'm not a scientist, you know, I'm going to rely on the scientists. I know, I go back to the confirmation hearing of Commissioner Awadi. It was before COVID, and she had a very contentious confirmation hearing, if my memory serves me correct. And, you know, this is before COVID. And I called the mayor, I think the first week, and I said, Mayor, you were fortuitous to put the epidemiologist at the helm. And when we had that meeting with her, I think we, many of you might remember, that she said that we have prepared for a pandemic a year before COVID. And we were one of the only cities that had a plan or had excess supplies and such. And thank God for her leadership during this period. And honestly, I, you know, I've had my conversations with her, and I've had my disagreements with, but I'm following the science, and I hope, I hope all of our city workers do that, all of our citizens do that. But a couple of things, two other things I wanted to bring up. You know, ever since COVID came about, we all lost our personal liberties, right? We lost businesses. We couldn't go outside. The beaches were closed. I mean, we all had a sacrifice in order to get this under control. And I have to give the Trump administration credit and the scientists for finding a vaccine. You know, it's interesting with Dr. Fauci. You know, Dr. Fauci's been around a long time. And I remember him talking about HIV and trying to find a vaccine for HIV. You know, folks, we don't have a vaccine for HIV. And the millions and millions of people that have lost their lives. So I was, I'm like, I can't believe we're having a vaccine. And then, and it has shown, the science has shown, that it is basically 95% effective. And even with the variants, you know, as our member from the Second Ward, I think he might be a doctor, I know you work for Cook County, but boy, you do more homework than I have really time for. But the, I am, I was so thrilled that we have the vaccine and that we can move this pandemic to the wayside. Because I think everybody, as Alderman Soria says, wants to get rid of the masks. We want to get back to normal. And the sooner we get people vaccinated, the sooner we can get our lives back to normal. And as was said, there'll probably be variants, and we'll probably have to take an annual shot. But we have to get our lives back to normal. We have to get our, we have to get our city back to normal. God bless, if it wasn't for Biden plan, we'd be bankrupt. And we have got to follow the science. We've got to get this pandemic under control. And I think we can do a, probably a more nuanced ordinance between now and December 31st. I first and foremost think that if testing is required, it should be, we can find the money to test the people on a weekly basis. I don't know why that's not in the budget, because we're spending everything else on pandemic-related issues, and I think we can do it. So there's, but the bottom line is, you know, I'm supporting the mandate, and I think the sooner we get our lives back to normal, the more we can move our city forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Tunnie. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. This has been a pretty interesting debate. But there's one thing that bothers me a little bit here. I do believe that the ordinance as written is definitely an overreach. We all clearly know and understand vaccination is the solution to ending this dreaded pandemic. All of us know someone that has lost their lives or been infected, afflicted by this disease. We know what we have has been approved by the FDA. The same FDA that approved the measles, mumps, Rebellus shots, the chickenpox, the shingles, the flu shot, same folks. So I question, what is this really about? And with all that being said, this, to me, is ultimately about control. And the vaccination really is a red herring. Because if individuals under the employ of the City of Chicago can randomly choose what they will and will not do, being given a direction, that's a huge problem. So I'm not going to fill those potholes you told me to fill, Mr. Foreman. I don't have to. I'm not going to pick up the garbage on Madison. I want to pick it up on Pulaski instead, because that's what I want to do. I don't want to sell the lady her sticker, because I don't like how she look. Again, we live in a democracy. And the democracy in the City of Chicago has leadership. This is not as if we're asking someone to do something that is wrong or illegal. It is perfectly within the confines of everything that's been happening right now. And so for a minority to attempt to take the city hostage by saying that, oh, you won't get ambulance service. Your house go up in flames, nobody will be there to put it out. Or when you dial 911, nobody will respond. That's hostage-taking. Because they don't want to comply with the policy that's been given. Again, if you let this go, today is this. What will it be tomorrow? It's 109, 110, almost. I talked to y'all the other day about some chicken. I'm going to make this, but what I didn't tell you was that my mother said, in this house, we eating baked chicken. In this house, we eating baked chicken, or you will not eat at all. So again, you have a choice. You can comply or not. You have a choice. And then you have to take the consequences of the choice that is made. There's nothing illegal about this policy. So again, it is a choice to comply or not comply. And the consequences for not complying today is to be placed on a no-pay status. That's the consequence. But you don't have to take that consequence. You can comply. So again, this is a red herring, because ultimately, this is about the ability for other individuals to choose what policy they will and will not follow. So today is this. We talk about garbage collection. It's okay if they miss your block. I guess that's what you're saying. It's okay if they don't fill your potholes. I guess that's what you're saying. It's okay if they don't respond to your 911 complaints, is what you're saying. Your mama's having a heart attack? Nah, forget about it. I don't want to go. That's what you're saying. So we must be honest and know and understand what this is really about. It's about compliance with directions that have been given. And again, it's 111. Don't want to eat the chicken, throw some whales. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Madam President, I move that we approve this or disapprove this ordinance about a roll, call, vote.
Chairman Harris, if I may, before we call the roll, I'd like to speak to the matter who...
...to vote.
Ladies and gentlemen, for 19 long months, 19 long months, this city has suffered. We have been under a plague that came to our doorstep, that we have been forced to address, and bend and twist ourselves in ways that we never would have imagined before. And many of you have spoken to that. And you've heard me say this before, in that 19 months, as the executive of this city, of this body, there's not been a single easy decision. of this body, there's not been a single easy decision. The weight of literally knowing that decisions that we were making were life and death to our residents, no one has taken that burden and that responsibility and obligation lightly, least of all me. We've lost over 6,000 people to death in COVID. The vast majority of whom died before there was a vaccine even available. And since December of last year, when that lifesaving vaccine has been available, we have spent hundreds of millions of dollars, hours that I couldn't even begin to calculate, trying to literally go door to door to convince our residents that this lifesaving, free and safe vaccine is something that they should take. And I don't know about you, but I believe by leading by example, by making sure that I live my values out loud every single day. And I know without a doubt, as many of you have eloquently said today, the only way that we can save lives and put this pandemic behind us is to get people vaccinated. This isn't about whether or not we support the police or fire or first responders. Of course we do. Of course we do. We depend upon them every single day. And yes, they have done incredible work for us to keep us safe. That's not what this is about. And we know that because the vast majority of our officers and our firemen are vaccinated. But it is about reaching those others. And I've said this to the union leaders that I've spent considerable time talking with throughout this pandemic, from its earliest beginning and up till today. We cannot maximize safety in our workplace without getting people vaccinated. So ladies and gentlemen, I believe in the science. I believe in the data. And what we know unequivocally is that the vaccine is the only answer. The only answer. But that's not what this debate is really about. I thought Alderman Irvin, when he says it's about control, was going to get there. Let me get there. Let me just put it on the table. This ordinance strips the executive of the ability to manage the executive branch, to manage the 30,000 employees and the executive departments. That's what this is about. It's happened before, 30-plus years ago, the different mayor, some members of this chamber were there and were perpetrators. That's really what this is about. Alderwoman Garza said it better than I ever will. Collective bargaining agreements will be a thing of the past. They will effectively be null and void if this ordinance is passed. Some said, the workers weren't given any choice. Not true. The workers elected their leaders. Their leaders had the opportunity to be at the table, beginning in mid-August. Some of them took that responsibility seriously and negotiated in good faith. And the final policy reflects those negotiations. But some of them didn't take it seriously. Too busy to come to the table on vacation, call next week. Now, we don't control what individual leaders of labor organizations tell their members, but most in good faith, go to their members beforehand, go back to their members, talk and consult. So if a union member didn't know, don't look here, look to your leadership. It's their responsibility, not here. Some said that they support the police. But do you support insubordination? Do you support insurrection? Every person is given multiple opportunities to comply. Is your, your name doesn't appear on the list, is that a mistake or is it true? If it's true, here's a computer, here's how simple it is, yes or no, vaccinated or not. If not, sign up for the testing. Then they're given even more counseling, over and over again, for hours this takes with each individual member, hours. And then if, even after the end of that, if it gets to that point, which luckily it hasn't for most, they're given a direct order, a lawful order, to comply by a supervisor in a chain of command. So do you think that it's appropriate to say to the chain of command, you have no power here? It's the employees, the only ones that matter. Now, Alderman Irvin said, it's about whether or not people are going to follow the chain of command, and it's 100% right. So why is it that some of the people that we trust to uphold the law should be elevated above the law? Because that's what this is about as well. Some said, well, the ordinance isn't perfect. It's not just imperfect, it's illegal. It violates the Illinois Constitution. It violates the Illinois Municipal Act. Because both of those documents vest leadership and control and management of the executive branch and the executive of every municipality in this state. So voting yes means you want to change the form of government by fiat, in a way that violates the Constitution and state law. So be clear about that as well. I don't know what this notion of natural immunity means. But here's what I do know. Right now, today, there are people in hospitals in this city clinging to life, on ventilators, gasping for breath, because this horrible virus has invaded their lungs and is robbing them of the oxygen that they need to be able to live. And what I also know is that 97% of those people are unvaccinated, unvaccinated. Every morning, I start my day with a call with Allison Arwady and others. Every day, Dr. Rarty reports out to the members of that call, the numbers from that day. And every single day, since this horrible virus came to our shores, people are dying every day. Every day, I hear the devastation. For those of you who say you support the police, I wonder how many more have to die? We lost four officers last year who died because of COVID-19. Four. I've seen firsthand the devastation of those families. We just retired those four stars a few weeks ago at police headquarters. Those families are still wrenched with pain and grief. More recently, a former police union leader died of COVID-19. So I want to ask those people who say they support the police, how many more have to How many more? The energy that you spent on this, spend the energy going into your wards and talking to your first responders about what you can do to help educate them. Because as sure as we are living, the people that are unvaccinated are playing Russian roulette with their life, and they're playing Russian roulette with the lives of their families, their neighborhoods, and the people in this city who have a right to believe that when someone from the city government shows up at their door, they are there to help them and save their life, not imperil it. This is about saving lives. Let me say one last thing, and I will sit, since you've given me this privilege to speak. The notion that we have not bargained in good faith is nonsense. We started this process in August and tried mightily to bring people together into the table. We work with some, but not with others. And you know who those people are. We will continue to work in good faith. And the notion that somehow this is about firing people, nobody wants people to lose their job. No one does. There's a reason why even the people who said, I will not follow this order, are coming back and asking for their jobs back. Because cooler heads have prevailed, and likely they went home and their spouse said, you did what? No, no, no. In this household, we don't miss paychecks. But in all seriousness, this notion that somehow our public safety is going to be imperiled, stop the fear mongering, I beg of you. Stop it. Because it's not true. I get a letter, oh my goodness, we're not going to have enough people to man our streets, public safety is at risk. That hasn't been true, and it won't be true. Stop the fear mongering. Spend the time in your ward educating people about the safety of this vaccine. I'm never going to do anything that imperils the safety of these, our families, our residents and neighborhoods. I'm out in the street constantly, and I see the pain of the victims. I call parents when their children have been killed. I carry that weight. I know firsthand what it feels like for these families, because they are in pain and suffering. So trivializing and politicizing an issue about public safety is shameful, and it must stop. It must stop. Just two days ago, we celebrated the most historic and progressive budget that the city has ever seen. And I know you took note, as I did, that we brought members of this council together, together, to move forward, to help our residents in their time of greatest need. That's what we need to be focusing on. And I refuse to let that feeling of joy that so many of us felt with that vote be dissipated by this nonsense. Our residents need us now to stand tall and be leaders. We will never put this pandemic in the rearview mirror unless we take bold steps. Some of you understand that. Some of you don't want to, but don't hold the rest of us back when we are trying to do the right thing for our residents in this moment of greatest need. And right now, when it comes to the pandemic, that means getting people vaccinated, going door to door if we need to, bringing the vaccine to them as we have been. And this notion that suddenly now I want to come together and talk, where have you been? Where have you been? Allison Arwady comes before this body in the health committee on a regular basis and talks. I know some of you outside of that time reach out to her and ask questions. We have put so much information at your fingertips, so somehow you don't know, then you haven't been looking. Ladies and gentlemen, we have to stop playing games with the pandemic. We have to stop playing games with people's lives. Alderman Miss is right. This confusion created for no good reason helps no one, doesn't save a single life, doesn't make sure that our babies are safe, our elders who we still have to reach and get them vaccinated. We have work to do, and we can do that, but only if we come together and we are united. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Yes. The, the matter before the body is, a yes vote is for the ordinance put forward by Tabarez and others to strip the executive of the authority to manage executive employees and bring this matter to the city council. That is, that is the question that's before the body. Please call the roll. Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to be clear, because I heard something different from Alderman here. So this is a motion to approve the ordinance, correct?
That's.
Well, that's not what.
This is a motion to vote up or down.
Yeah. It's vote on the ordinance.
Vote up or down.
A yes vote is yes, approving the ordinance. A no vote is, is disapproving the ordinance. Same kind of vote that we take all the time. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Madam President, I just want to be.
Briefly, Alderman Moore, because you've already spoken.
I just want to be clear. I just want to be clear. It is, your, this ordinance is, you're saying not to repeal the mandate. It's state what you just said the ordinance is doing.
The ordinance as written seeks to, seeks to vacate the mandate and give to this body authority over decisions regarding executive branch employees. So it strips the executive.
So the ordinance is doing two things?
So it has two, the ordinance has two parts to it. Please call. Any other points of clarification? So a yes vote is a yes, in support of the ordinance, a no vote is against the ordinance. Are we clear? Alderman Irvin.
Just clear, her motion, your motion was to approve the ordinance, correct?
No.
No.
No, I said to vote it up or down.
No, 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 no. What is the motion?
My motion is to vote this ordinance up or down. About roll call vote.
It's to call the question.
So, no, 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 no. There's, we're having a conversation if the motion was to disapprove or to approve, based on what I'm hearing.
Or disapprove.
The motion was to approve.
No, no.
No.
But it's, this is to call the question.
Oh, this is to call the question. We ain't even at, okay.
You want me to call it again?
Please.
My motion is to vote this up or down, in simple language. If you sup, if you support this ordinance, vote yes. If you do not support it, you vote no.
All right. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Laspada votes no. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins votes no. Alderman Dowell. Alderman Dowell votes no. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Hairston votes no. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer votes no. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris votes no. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal votes yes. Alderman Sedlowski-Garza. Alderman Sedlowski-Garza votes no. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Thompson votes no. Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn votes yes. Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke votes yes. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez votes yes. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Coleman votes no. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea votes yes. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins votes no. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez votes no. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Tabarez votes yes. Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott votes no. Alderman Sechel Lopez. Alderman Sechel Lopez votes no. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Maldonado votes no. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Burnett votes no. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Irvin votes no. Alderman Telefiero. Alderman Telefiero votes no. Alderman Ravoyes. Alderman Ravoyes votes yes. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Cardona votes yes. Alderman Wagaspak. Alderman Wagaspak votes no. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez votes no. Alderman Austin.
Absolutely not, no.
Alderman, Alderman Austin votes no. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Ramirez Rosa votes no. Alderman Viegas. Alderman Viegas votes no. Alderman Mits. Alderman Mits votes no. Alderman Spazato. Alderman Spazato is a yes. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Vasquez is a no. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Napolitano is a yes. Alderman Riley. Alderman Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tunny is a no. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is a yes. Alderman Kappelman. Alderman Kappelman is a no. Alderman Martin. Alderman Martin is a no. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Osterman is a no. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Haddon is a no. Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Silverstein is a no.
The yeas in support of the ordinance are 13, the nays are 30, the ordinance fails. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I move we reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration say aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The motion for reconsideration fails. Alderman Harris on the motion to adjourn.
Alderman Harris moves that we adjourn. We understand that motion, right?
All those in favor of the motion to adjourn say aye. Any say no? Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.